Okay. Meeting is called to order.
Roll call for the city council meeting of June 21st, 2017 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Kowalski, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Mr. President, I would ask that we remember all of those in our community that are less fortunate than we are in any and every way. You know, it's challenging to continue to ask for prayer for and positive energy for the violence and the craziness that's going on in our community, but we can't give up. We gotta keep pushing. You have to keep praying. You have to keep doing the work. So, remember those that have lost loved ones in this community, whether by natural causes, by violence, by any and every way. Remember those families on both sides of situations because it's a loss to our community as a whole. And remember all of the young people that are seeing and experiencing this violence and that are traumatized by it in our thoughts and prayers as well. And finally, I ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the best information to make the most appropriate decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Approval of minutes from the city council meeting of June 7th, 2017, and bills for payment on June 16th and 23rd, 2017. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski.
Do we have a presentation?
No presentations tonight.
Rose, do we have a presentation or?
No, not tonight.
Oh, okay. Do we have any citizens here for repository sales? Please step up to the mic, please. Give your name and address.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
My name is Brett Culver. I live at 1-831 Nagel Road, Erie, Pennsylvania, 16510. The repository property I'm interested in is 939-41 East 8th Street.
Okay, what do you plan on doing with it?
I recently acquired a place down on German Street, and what I need is a place for storage. And this property here has a garage on it, which makes me interested in that property or that parcel. It has fire damage, so what I'm going to need to do is renovate that garage, and I want to turn it into a storage, possibly a workshop. It's a small parcel. That's my intention for the property.
Well, excuse me, Mr. President. What's the address again, sir?
It's 939-41 East 8th.
What is the dash? What is that?
Dash 41. You have it listed as 939-941, but that's a misprint.
Okay. Is that a parcel number?
And then 941, two addresses.
Oh, four, okay, through, okay, I got you. I was gonna, was that a parcel number? I didn't know what that, oh, the dash threw me off. Thank you. So, you said there's a garage on that property right now?
Yeah, it's a brick garage, but it had fire damage where the roof burnt, so it needs rebuilt. I'm gonna put a new roof on it, turn it into a storage, possibly a workshop where I can fix things. I have a place right down the road on German Street. It's nearby. I can use it. That's my interest.
And so, there's the garage? So, if it, it sounds like it's two parcels or two addresses. Is it, is there a lot of land around it or another yard on side of it?
It's very small. It's got, it's got a little fenced-in area. I could probably put a garden in there. Would be nice.
Okay. Mr. President, is there, in relation to what you'd like, what you would like to use the property for, is that appropriate use for, if you want to do, is that an appropriate use, I guess, zoning-wise? To have a workshop separate from a house or a building? I don't, I don't know what that looks like, so that may be something we'd have to look into?
I think we probably would.
Depends if.
No, please, yeah, I know.
If, even as a profit-making venture, it'd be different. Then it'd be commercial.
Sure.
If it's just your own. The way they. Like, in my, like, my garage, it doesn't get a lot of use, but there's a workbench and, you know, there's stuff to do, so it's not separate from that, you know? Even though it's in the garage, it's not.
The way it was explained once to me was that if you don't draw attention and it doesn't bother your neighbors, it's not a, like, a major business with trucks going in and out, then it probably would be okay. But if you draw attention, you're, like, having traffic in there all the time. It might be something we could ask, you know, Matt, Matt Puzz.
Is that the only structure on the property?
I'm just, yeah, I'm just gonna use it for fixing, like, furniture and chairs and tables and stuff like that, my own personal home use and stuff.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I mean, and I'm not questioning that. I just know that we have to kind of answer questions around zoning, just to make sure that you, what you and anyone wants to use a property for is appropriately zoned.
I think that's what it was used for prior to the fire.
So, there's no other properties on the, no other building structures on the property?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other, any other members of council? We're not gonna vote on this tonight anyway. It'll be at a future meeting. So, if you leave your name with our secretary here, we'll be, we'll, we'll check into it with zoning and planning, just to make sure.
Okay.
So, we can, when we vote on it, we'll understand everything. I can have him contact you, and you can explain it to him. Okay?
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other repository? Yes.
Just for, just to support citizen, it's a repository?
A repository.
Repository, yes, sir.
I'm already hearing because I'm.
No problem. That's why we got mics. It's all good.
I don't.
Okay, are there any other citizens for repository?
All right. Oh, my fault.
Okay, you're here for repository sale?
No, I'm here because I just had to, I got someone to be. I got family that have died because, I'm here for the marijuana thing, and I want to say this real quick, and then you guys can do this. I don't have time to hang out in the city council. I've been here almost 20 years. I said this, I was in jail with Mr. Mersky's brother. I know very precisely, I know Bizarro and that descendant third. I'm Italian too, so that trumps everything. And I wanted to say this, is I support the marijuana bill because I own this city. They approved that. They called me a P on the city.
No, that's during citizens to be heard, so we'll call you up, okay? Getting back to the agenda, are there any citizens here for repository sales? Are there any citizens here for repository sales? One more time. Are there any citizens here for repository sales? Okay, hearing none? We're going to move on to citizens to be heard. Did anybody call in, Rose?
No.
Okay. Citizens to be heard, feel free to come up to the mic. You have five minutes. Give your name and address. Hey, we got first one.
My name's Mike Smith. I live in Harbor Creek at 5073 Wiltsie, and I live in four to six months out of the year. I own real estate in the, the city here, and over on East 7th Street, they put a trailer right next to one of my rental properties. For 50 years, I'd known that you weren't allowed to put trailers in the city, and all of a sudden, the law changed where they can. And two, I went to the code enforcement, and he said in 2005, they rewrote the code, and they forgot to put trailers in there. So, that means they can put a trailer on any lot in the city of Erie because they were designated for certain districts. So, that means, I own property on the Upper East Side, Upper West Side. That means they can put a trailer on any lot in the city of Erie, and what it's gonna do is depreciate the value of any house that it's put next to. It looks horrible. It's a nice-looking trailer, but it doesn't look good in a neighborhood of residential houses. And, that's it, I guess.
What's your address, sir?
5073 Wiltsie, Harbor Creek.
Oh, no, I mean where your apartment is in the city.
13409 East 7th Street.
Okay, I'd like to take a ride by there and take a look.
But, I own property on the Upper East Side, and I'm looking at, I can buy a $5,000 trailer, put it on the Upper East Side, I can get $600 a month, ran out of it, and that would ruin the value of the house I put it next to. But if, I mean, if you're a kid graduating from school, why wouldn't you buy a $5,000 trailer, buy a $10,000 lot, put it next to a $100,000 house? That's a no-brainer. This, it would ruin the city if all them, everybody got the right idea. This is the first trailer that's been in the city, and the law's been in effect since 2005 because they forgot to put trailers in there because they said they wrote trailer parks, and after trailer parks, it said trailers, but they didn't put trailers in there.
Can I, can I ask, Mr. President, who did you speak to? I'm sorry, in code enforcement?
Yes. The guy up in the code, code enforcement office.
Do you know that Nate, the director? Matt?
I'm not sure what his name is.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
At point of reference, I got a problem call from another area of the city, and I didn't know it either. And when I talked to him, he said, "It's a hole in the ordinance, so I think we're gonna have to look at it." Because I got neighbors up on Camphausen and a couple other places that aren't happy. You know, they said, you know, for years, they were outlawed, like this gentleman said, and all of a sudden, they're proliferating now at a.
I can buy a trailer and go up on Upper State Street where you got some houses that are worth a lot of money up there, buy a $75,000 lot, put a $5,000 trailer, and probably get $250,000 for the trailer because it's in a nice neighborhood. It's, I think it needs to be addressed. I live in Florida, and there are nice trailer places in Florida, and they take care of them, but there are some places that are horrible. And Lawrence Park, or Westyville, I'm sorry, you just go down there, and it's, it's horrible. It's just despicable what people, people have trailers because they can't afford a regular house. They don't have them because they like them.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Julie Munich. I'm the Assistant Executive Director of all of Erie, and I am also a county appointee to the EMTA Board. I am speaking on behalf of myself. There is a concern that I have. The mayor wants to reappoint members to the EMTA Board. Some of the members have been, their terms have been expired for several years, and what really, what concerns me is that some of these members will be in for four, four to five, five years, which means that the new administration will not have a chance to appoint somebody to the EMTA Board. And I think as, as we transition, we should respect the fact that whether it's Mr. Persinger or Mr. Schimler, they would want somebody, maybe two or three somebodies, to be appointed to the board. So, that is my statement. I hope that you will consider maybe waiting till December to appoint people to the board. Thank you.
Hi, Cindy Purvis, 101 West 34th Street. I have a few things. I'd like to say that I agree with Julie. I think that these members, and, and I like all of the members of the EMTA Board, but some of those terms have been expired for a number of years. We have a new mayor that will be taking office in January, and I believe that new mayor should have the opportunity to appoint new members if he wishes or keep the ones that are still there. It just seems like a power play and leaves a bad taste in the mouth of citizens when these things happen. Next, I would like to say that I walked last Monday on the viaduct with the March for Children's Safety, and I just did not know until I did that march that there was a part of the Bayfront Connector that has no sidewalks. So, you're walking from, from Erie County Farms toward 12th Street, and all of a sudden, the sidewalk ends. There is nowhere to walk. So, I would encourage all of you to take that walk and see for yourselves, and I would hope that you would stop the tearing down the McBride Viaduct until, at least at the minimum, that there is proper sidewalk put on the Bayfront Connector for people to use. And third, I'd like to say that I would hope that city council would consider decriminalizing marijuana. I think this is a good, a good way for us to go. We are, are paying way too much in taxes to incarcerate people, and this is a felony right now, and so it goes on people's permanent records. So, we have more people that are having a hard time finding jobs and establishing themselves in the community. State College did this, I believe Philadelphia did this, and I think this is a way for our town to go also. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Cynthia Mohammed, 2213 Parade.
Lisa Austin, 1260 West 9th.
As our city council, you've been told some seven falsehoods about the viaduct, and we're here to tell you the truth. Number one, pedestrians will be safe because a sidewalk will be constructed on the south side of East 12th Street to prevent the need to cross over dangerous intersection at the Bayfront Highway and East 12th Street. That's false.
The truth is, the viaduct is needed to protect our kids. Since no sidewalk is going to be built on the south side of East 12th, pedestrians are gonna have to cross the dangerous intersection at East 12th and the Bayfront. If the viaduct is torn down, more children are gonna be hit by vehicles. I was there today. I just want to comment that it's a 64-foot crossing, and it's 14 seconds that's given. I could not cross it in the time that is given.
Number two, the cost of demolition will be $2.3 million, and that's false also.
The truth is that we can save money by keeping the viaduct. The cost of demolition, which started at 1.2 million and was voted on at 2.3 million, has risen to 4.5 million. Restored, the viaduct can help to hire local people getting jobs.
Number three, unless the city demolishes the viaduct, the state will make the city pay the $85,000 for the Kimball Reef Study. That's false also.
The truth is that the city's actually off the hook. No matter what you decide to do with the viaduct, the state is going to pay that $85,000 fee for the L.R. Kimball Study.
Number four, the funds for demolition can't be used to fix the bridge, and that's false.
The truth is, is that we have some of the money needed to fix the bridge. The funds for the demolition can be used to fix the bridge. This has already happened in other Pennsylvania communities.
Number five, the city can't afford to insure the viaduct, and that is false also.
The truth is, is that insurance is not an issue. The city's insurance will not go up if the viaduct stays or down if the viaduct goes. Just as you insure your entire house, you don't insure separately the bathroom, the city ensures the entire city itself.
Number six, the city can't afford to maintain the viaduct, and that's false.
The truth is, we can take care of the viaduct via a public-private partnership. Once it's reskin, the cost to maintain the viaduct involves lighting, snow plowing, and cleaning the gutters. Erie CPR is standing by to formulate this public-private plan to maintain the viaduct. And I want to add that Erie CPR is now officially affiliated with the 501(c)(3) Winds of Chains.
Number seven, the path along the highway is better pedestrian right than the viaduct, and that's false also.
The truth is, is that the viaduct is preferred by pedestrians because the path along the highway is more dangerous, more crowded, more polluted, and more noisy than the viaduct.
Despite what everyone's saying, it's not too late to delay, to delay the demolition. If we work together, we can keep the children safe and transform Erie, but city council must vote to delay the demolition. And why are we voting to spend more money and, and protect our children? And the children are, we have a young boy that's in the hospital now. Thank you for your time.
If I could share with the council copies of the true and false about the viaduct.
Mr. President?
Yes.
That's what I asked of the administration. Can you, we know we were given a plan of what the changes and enhancements were gonna be to help towards citizens' pedestrian safety. If those have changed in a significant way, if we could maybe, you could maybe communicate with the engineer's office and give us that information.
Nothing has changed since Mr. Tushak has had a study session with, with council.
So, based on that study session, the things that we were comfortable with as possible were that the pedestrian enhancements were gonna be made, and if that hasn't changed, or if that has changed, we would need to know that. And, okay, thank you.
Good evening, Council. Carrie Soxey, 455 West Front Street. I'm here tonight for the final vote on the urban farming initiative. I just wanted to say thank you again to Councilman Brennan for all of his work on this initiative. Thank you to all of you for your support on this. I first brought this concept to the redevelopment authority over a year ago, so I'm really excited to be on the other side of this vote tonight. I'm really excited to start building my little business here in the city, and I think after tonight, you guys aren't gonna have to hear from me for a while, so you can be excited about that, too. Thank you guys so much.
Great, thank you, Carrie. Appreciate it.
Evening, Council. My name is Daniel Duvey. I live at 9 Eagle Street out in northeast. I work up the street. I'm here to talk about marijuana decriminalization. We've already talked about that a couple of interesting times tonight. You know, there's, there's two schools of thought about the arc of history. Many people are familiar with the idea that the arc of history is long, but it bends towards justice. Another frame is that the arc of history hasn't really bent since 1492. Criminalization of our citizens is a terrible problem. It costs families, parents being removed from families. It costs young people their education, and across the country, people are beginning to wake up and realizing that the prohibition of marijuana has led to more problems than it's worth. It's absurd. I would suggest that most people on this panel, or most people on this council have some familiarity, have smelled it in the air in some public forum. Maybe you've been to Colorado, where it is perfectly legal to enjoy recreationally. But one of the most insidious aspects of the prohibition is that there's disparity of enforcement, both racial and economic. If a young person is found with even a small amount of marijuana, they can lose all federal funding for their college. And the cost to the city, you're talking about locking people up for periods of time for something that is, you know, we know what it does. We've seen the way it's been used recreationally. And look, I get it, like, it's pot, right? The attitude among many people I've talked to, some of you, I've stated that it's like, look, I get it, it's kind of ridiculous we have this absurd prohibition, but, you know, the state's looking at it, and the federal government's looking at it, it's a little wishy-washy. But in the meantime, people's lives are being ruined, and we're throwing money out the window. And this is a moment where we can bend justice, bend our arc of Erie towards justice if we move forward on this. It's been done, as was stated in State College, and you're gonna hear from a couple other people tonight, some of which have the ordinance that they actually passed in State College. This is something that could be done to, to put Erie at that forefront, bending toward justice. And I think that all of you have, have an interest in that. Certainly have an interest in, in making sure people's lives are at the forefront, but also the cost of the city. So, between all the different economic impacts, it just makes sense to do, and my sense is that many people, most people at this point, understand that it's time. So, I encourage you to think about this and to move forward on it shortly. Thank you for your time tonight, Council. I look forward to speaking with you soon.
Thank you.
My name's Art Leopold, 5341 Apple Grove Lane in Erie, 16506. And I come for you, in front of you this evening, to talk about the decriminalization of marijuana. And this is brought up to me principally from the study of the book by Michelle Alexander called The New Jim Crow. And if you read that book and you understand what mass incarceration is doing to our communities, in particular, our communities of color, you too would find and look for ways to solve this situation. We are locking up young people, and I'm present in a rate. We're locking up folks of a minority community in overwhelming numbers, and what happens to them when they get locked up for a week, a month, or even a year, and they try to come out and they try to find a job? They try to get health care, to, to find student loans? All of these things are closed off to them. And so, doing research, I found out that 20 to 25 percent of local convictions and folks that, that go to prison for even short amount of time or for small amounts of marijuana. So, then, I looked around to see what we can do, and this brings me to the second part. As was referenced, I actually have the ordinance from State College, Pennsylvania, where a student approached State College Government and said, "We need to do something about this," because his fellow students were being picked up with small amounts of marijuana, and they couldn't get student loans anymore. It basically ruined their lives. We can't do this to our young people. We have to stop this. Not only that, from an economic standpoint, if you don't lock people up, you're reducing the resources that are necessary. If you don't go and charge your police to go after these people, you're reducing the burden on them so they can go fight opioid, the opioid crisis and the other issues. We need to decriminalize marijuana. And so, I have for you today, not on the ordinance of the borough that was put together, but then they went back and amended it because they found out they didn't do anything with the paraphernalia. And what they're doing, and what I'm asking, is to take it from a misdemeanor charge down to a summary offense. This is a big deal. In State College, in little less than six months, last year, they had dozens and dozens of convictions. Now, they have less than a handful. Just think what that would do. Not only are you saving young people's lives, but you're reducing the need for resources. So, I have these. Hopefully, you can use these as a format. Also, I have a letter of support that has been put together from a community that studied it, and I'm gonna present that to you. And I hope you give this serious consideration. This isn't something that can wait, gentlemen. Every day, there are young people's lives that are being ruined because they have a joint or two, and it's within your power. Look, the state can do what they need to do. The federal government can do what they need to do. We can do something in a local ever, at this local area to make an effect, and I implore that you take a good look at it. Thank you.
Mr. Leopold, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
In, within your five minutes, where is this conversation coming from? And I feel like I'm missing, because there's nothing on our agenda, and so this is, but this is a legitimate question. There are several people here speaking on the topic, so I just was interested in, is there something at the state level, something that is relevant in the moment for us that I missed around the topic?
You know, I, I don't think so. It's been bubbling up among the community.
Yes, sir.
There are various groups that have been studying the mass incarceration issue, and we're trying to find ways and means to make an effect.
Right.
My personal crusade is to try to make an effect now, and if I can help save some young lives by imploring you, take a look at this issue. And again, you still get revenue. You can look at the ordinance. You're not missing anything. The only thing you're doing is saving young, some young lives, some terrible mistakes that they're making.
Sure.
And at some point, I've talked with every one of the legislators. I've been on the phone, I've talked with them in person. To a man, they said, "This on the state will be approved to be illegal, and we will collect tax money," because they need the money. They need the billion dollars to help with the pensions and everything else.
Yes, sir.
I've talked about it, but you know what? That's gonna happen when it happens, but what I can do now is implore you folks at the local level to take a look at this. This is easily within your purview. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for your question.
Thank you. I think when someone referenced Philadelphia, and ironically, I was in Philadelphia at a city council meeting when they passed their, their legislation on minimizing consequence for marijuana at a certain amount of quantity on, on a person. But they are a first-class city, and so that's kind of an apples and oranges thing. I 100% agree, and it will also work in the area of criminal, criminal justice and juvenile justice in particular, and the criminalization of our young people for a variety of reasons is absolutely out of hand and out of control. And then irony- So I go to the prison every Saturday, and there's no less than five, 10 young men in there for minimal amounts of marijuana. And then we have people that are millionaires looking to make money off the same thing these guys are in jail for. So I get the point, I just did, wanted to make sure that we weren't missing something that we could tangibly do in the moment. And, but we will, I personally, and I'm sure others are looking into it as well, so. Thanks for the extra time, Mr. President, but I just, I wasn't sure.
We can bring it up at the league when they're here.
Yeah, absolutely.
See if there's any movement on the our level.
Yeah, yeah, third-class city level.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just explain to everybody, Philadelphia has their own little world, unlike the rest of the Commonwealth.
My name is Fred Ettefer. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. I'm a certified orientation and mobility specialist. I first want to mention again that I am concerned by the manner in which the outgoing mayor is proposing board appointments. For example, you have three people whose terms expired in 2011, and you are being asked to appoint a term now that would go through 2021. If those terms had been correctly reappointed, they would have expired in 2015, and those terms would go to 2019. At the most, that is what you should, the mayor has the right to ask, not something going into 2021. And most quizzical is, why is Fred Rush's term, Fred Rush was only appointed in 2016, why should he be reappointed now for a four-year term? I just think you should just send all that back and not let it be part of the consent agenda like you did last week with the planning commission. I also want to talk about the viaduct. On June 13th, together with children, elders, and many other members of our community, I walked what the city engineer has described as a superior route to the McBride viaduct. It's really criminal, not criminal, but it's really, I don't understand how that could even be considered a superior route. The Bayfront Connector is immediately adjacent to the traffic. It's noisy, it's smelly, it's polluted, you get sprayed with rain in the wet weather, and it crowds people. You have eight feet of width versus 22 feet of width with the viaduct. We have demonstrated to you that this is not a group of marginal west-side white people who are concerned about the viaduct. These are members of the community, people who do not want to be balkanized and containerized by having one of their pedestrian routes eliminated. I am asking that you rescind the approval of the demolition of the viaduct. This is an approval that was given on November 5th, 2014. That is the approval of the study and your statement to move forward on the demolition of the viaduct. I say you should rescind that approval and that you should instruct that the consultants spend no more additional money on the project to design the demolition. I understand, Mr. Jones, that you have been told things by the city engineer about the potential to improve the crossing at 12th and the Bayfront Connector. I speak to you as a pedestrian, I speak to you as a certified orientation and mobility specialist, who spent a lot of time in complex pedestrian crossings, trying to help people cross safely, dealing with right-turning and left-turning cars. And that is a very, very wide street. There's many turning cars, many, many semi-trucks turning in all directions. That is not a superior route, not by any means, and there is no real good reason to do this. There really isn't. The good reason is to preserve the viaduct, and I urge you to do that. Thank you.
I live at 722 East Grandview in the city. Came here tonight, I was asked to give some sort of endorsement to what some of the other people have been saying in terms of the decriminalization of marijuana. I think there's a sound basis for that. I'm not here to present the case, just merely advocate for it. Kaz, you said something about Philadelphia being a different entity, and I imagine it is in a lot of ways, but so would State College be, and I imagine we fit somewhere in between there. But, you know, the general concept of decriminalization sounds like a, across the board and across the arguments, a progressive notion, and I'd like to see Erie as a progressive city, and it's something I can be proud of in a general terms. The second topic people raised tonight was the demolition of the viaduct, and I also went on the march where we chanted for, I believe, "Slow down, save a life," and the focus there was on children's safety. But as I walked down to that intersection there on 12th and the Bayfront, it's a tricky predicament. I mean, I'm a guy who loves to dance in traffic, you know, and with the arrows, turn lanes, and people don't want to let you across. So I see, if you're a kid walking there, it's definitely a dangerous situation. And on a separate note, from a guy who lives on each side, you know, that's a real inconvenience, not being able to drive over that anymore. So I don't know what kind of funding would be involved in it, but I'd like to see that thing not only not demolished, but restored and functional again. And thirdly, in regards to the, what Fred was just talking about, the appointment of boards, you know, not necessarily my main issue, but if people are appointed and within certain term limits on the board, and those limits are expired, it might as well, it makes sense at least to review possible other candidates, I would think. People have interest, want to be a part of that, I'm sure they could help. I don't know the interest of all people on it, I'm sure everyone has the best general purpose interest that they can, but, you know, why not open it up? So just those three points, I wanted to add my endorsements to and what people are coming from here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Deontay Cooley. I live in 908 West 22nd Street. It's my first time ever coming here before, so bear with me, I got my timer going because I know I've got five minutes. But what you have in front of you is a proposal I have put together. Like, through my work, I'm a drug and alcohol treatment specialist, Department of Corrections, I work at Cambridge Springs. There was an event that was hosted at Hines Field, the superintendent of each prison in the western region was to pick two participants to go to the event. It was an event at Hines Field with some NFL Hall of Famers, Darryl Green hosted it, Anthony Munoz was there, as well as Aeneas Williams. They ran it groups, and then we did breakout groups to co-facilitate and reiterate to the children what they were saying. So as they were observing our groups, I was able to make a connection. I had about 15 children in my group. I was able to pretty much connect with all of them. Aeneas Williams came, sat down, talked with me. Yo, you did amazing. Like, he interrupted me, like, I didn't reach out to him or anything, I was eating lunch. Yo, you did an amazing job, I liked the way you reached out with them kids, ya, ya, you're going places. Long story, we talked about 20 minutes, he ended up, we prayed together, he said, "God's going to put people in your life that are going to be able to help you and put you on the right track." So I asked him, "Are you one of those people?" Yes, came, he took my information, took my phone number down. So me and him, we talked, he mentioned Mel Blunt, you know, he said, "Mel Blunt lives in this area, I'm not from this area, maybe you and him do some good work." We stayed in contact, back and forth texting. So then I'm asking, I said, "Hey, so I'm interested in the Mel Blunt thing, like, is there any possible way maybe we can get in touch with one another?" He said, "Mel's going to call." You know, Mel ended up calling me one night, Sunday night, it was a late night. Long story short, again, we talked, it was a great conversation, I pretty much gave him my resume in like two minutes. So I get off the phone, go to work the next day, now my mind is going, so I sent him a text message, I lied to him. "Hey, plan on being in Pittsburgh this weekend, got family down there, if we can meet up, maybe lunch, breakfast, coffee, whatever, talk?" Okay. He texts me back three days later, "When you get here, let me know." Goed to Pittsburgh Saturday morning, hung out all day, waiting for him to call me back, text me back, whatever. He eventually called me back. I'm going to church this evening, you're more than welcome to come, me and my family. Invited me to church, I met his family, pastor, friends, so on and so forth. So then we talked, you know, we stayed in contact, he's been encouraging me through work to try to advance, get promotions. So he, I told him, you know, I checked out his website, he has a facility for youth, at-risk youth, and I'm like, "Yo, I love the work that you do, I checked out everything, it's very inspiring, my city's at a hard time right now, I would love to try to do what you do, if you can help me assist me in any way, shape, or form, not asking for handouts, not asking for money, resources, connections, to be able to build my city." So he told me, "We have some events coming up," he invited me there, I was just there a week and a half ago, it was at his ranch, it was Steeler Rookie Day. All the rookies at the Steelers are there, we out there with kids. So he introduced me to his program manager, his facility, like, who runs the facility. So we talked, 30-year-old, young black guy, "Yo, this is very inspiring, encouraging." He's like, "We're trying to get this place popular, so, you know, you, Mr. Mel speaks highly of you, if you ever want to come back, let me know, bring five, bring 50, come have a good time." Will's got the turn, and I say, I hit him back two days later, "Listen, I want to bring my whole city out there." He said, "That sounds like a great idea." So typed up something, pitched him a proposal, is what you have in front of you, the first thing, Erie Day. Now, I understand there's grammatical errors in it, I did it for a reason, because I wanted to be more heartfelt than business-minded. So it was kind of like a play with words, I can articulate very well, type in paperwork, documentation, all of that. It was a mind thing. So he said, "Yo, that's great." But before he opened the document, the explanation was typed up so well that he had no choice but to open it. So I remained in contact with him the next day. "Listen, I've been brainstorming, can you give me a personal standpoint? Send him more information." That's the second document you have, pretty much the day. Outline the day, "Yo, this sounds amazing, I'm going to present it to my board, see what they say." Okay, so he's brainstorming, he texts me back, "Mrs. Blunt's going to get in contact with you, she has a final say-so." "All right, here's some ideas, here's some activities." Hit him with more. That is the last page that you have, as far as what I can use for the grounds. "Yo, this is great, let me know, this sounds fantastic, I'm telling you it's going to be a go." So I reached out to some people, created my own committee. I reached out to community centers, I reached out to daycare owners, I reached out to business owners, I reached out to personal friends, I reached out to coworkers, everybody's saying, "Sounds like a great plan, sounds like it's on board." I reached back to him again, the document that I sent to him, I sent two more that you don't have in front of you. So sent him, he said, "Yo, this sounds great, now what we need to know is, will you need our food and our staff, or will you provide your own, and as far as transportation, and what's the budget?" Never done anything like this before. People have been reaching out to me, saying, like, a guy from Wendy's, like, "Yo, we're a sponsor, you get cooking forks, knives, spoons, and I can get you a 15% day, everybody who uses coupons, you'll get 15% of the proceeds." I don't have a nonprofit. This was just me meeting somebody, it could have been a possible opportunity for me to create for myself, but I'm not about myself. You know what I mean? The city of Erie is suffering, there's horses out there, there's two lakes stocked with fish, there's a quarter-mile workout course, there's a rope course, there's a team-building course. It is 400 yards of open space, it's a big pavilion. He actually invited me to another event, it is Pitt Panthers, the Rookie Day, they make the football players come out there to interact with the kid. He told me, "It's invite-only, you can come, dinner's one following week, it's our youth summit." Pretty much sounds similar to what he's doing. So he was like, "That sounds like a great idea, come out." So I'm invited twice to two more events. I plan on bringing half my committee one trip, half the committee next trip, get as much picture, photos, videos as possible, so that I can show it off, so people can see that I'm serious. When I tell you I've been in contact with either Mel Blunt, his program director, or somebody else off of his board every single day since I've been there, which was last Thursday, I've been in contact, I have text messages, I have emails, I have all kinds of information. All I'm asking for, I just want to spread the word and get the support. Me, financially, I mean, I make $60,000 a year, and I can't even manage with that, I have five children, I have to take care of them, they come first. But there's a lot of people in the city that can, if you give a dollar, if you give $10, if you spread the word, if you come volunteer, if you send a kid, all we have to do is get there. I want to get out there, have enough volunteers to where everybody works the station, we don't need any of their help, except for their facility, and maybe with the horses, we're going to come out there, show them our city can have a good time, we're going to clean up after ourselves, we're going to pack up, we're going to get out of there, we're going to have fun, it's going to be safe, and it's going to be for every single kid. And I don't think anybody would be able to say no. How can you say no when you're giving this much opportunity to a kid? And on top of that, this is definitely a way for us to develop a relationship with Mr. Blunt and what he's doing in the city of Pittsburgh, for us to try to do something similar with the city of Erie. This is all passion, I'm not trying to make money off of this, I'm not trying to get rich. When I was younger, growing up, I was at the Trinity Center, they used to take, I've been to Tennessee, I've been to Toronto.
Can you wrap it up, or you have to?
I apologize, but I'm
Oh, that's okay, go ahead.
Letting you go, I'm waiting for you to tell me this stuff. I hurt your time, I'm giving you the floor, I'm taking it, you know what I mean?
I thought you were going to wrap up, but you did a good job, though.
I just want to spread the word, y'all have the information, I'll pass it to the newsman, I just want to get, I'm trying to do something for the kids, like.
Thank you. Thank you. Finally, somebody beat out Curtis Jones.
You know that's saying something.
Good evening. Adam Trot, 531 West 6th Street, second floor. Couple quick comments first. One, that problem that Mr. Smith brought up about the trailers, if that problem truly is originated from the 2005 zoning ordinance redraft, that's 12 years ago, and amendments are done on zoning ordinances all the time. So the fact that if they knew that since back then, and no one's made an effort to amend the zoning ordinance to cover that, then I would request City Council to make a resolution and get them on it right away. There's a lot of salient points about that issue. Secondly, it was asked about why all this new conversation about marijuana? Well, that comes from the federal level. When our new Attorney General, Jeff Session, said he's going to go after it, and pretty much scared 90% of America with that attitude, now you're seeing the grassroots respond. So that's where it's really coming from. Other triggers are smaller triggers, but that's the cannon that got it going. So that's where that comes from. My main purpose of coming here tonight is to emphasize that we can, the clock continues to tick on the viaduct, and we've offered a ton of research to refute the idea that demolishing it is anything short of crazy. I want to commend some of the earlier speakers, not just on the viaduct issue, but you'll notice, a lot of speakers come up here, and they don't whimsically say what they would like to see, they bring research. They'll bring documents and records of things that substantiate their position. And that's what we've been doing for over three-plus years now. And when we're told that, well, we're being told something else from the city engineer or the city solicitor or administration, I strongly challenge that, they don't substantiate their position. And they've never confronted it face-on because they can't substantiate it. It's all hearsay on their part. We have documents from PennDOT and the city engineer, and even statements made at the city council level that maintenance costs are a problem. And we've proven they're not. Ask the city engineer to prove it, because we've proven they're not. Ask the city engineer, "How much have you spent on the viaduct since the refab in 1970?" They don't give you an answer, because there hasn't been much. These kinds of lack of substantiations is the whole point that we're trying to bring to bear here, that when we're falsely rebutted for the positions we state regarding the viaduct, those rebuttals never have substantiation where ours always does. And I hope that city council will start to take that under consideration when they try to say that, "Well, we need to take their word for it." No, you don't. That's why you're there, and that's why you're elected by the people, to challenge such falsehoods. The latest, see, we research this stuff all the time because there is no one at City Hall that does this, no one. And our point is to bring this information forward so decisions can be made on a more factual basis. The latest thing we've been researching have been how you analyze urban systems. And one of the latest set of metrics, and there is no set of metrics that's the Bible, what you do is you keep piling them up, and you see consistencies from one table of metrics to another, and that starts to validate each other's metrics. But the latest one is called intelligent urbanism, and it's got 10 axioms. They are balance with nature, balance with tradition, use appropriate technology, create socially engaging and public spaces that enhance human interaction in the city, design to human scale. We've seen how a lot of the renovations on State Street, they were modern design theory-based, and they don't address human scale, and that's why some of State Street is awful. Enhance the opportunity system that your city provides. A city exists because it creates avenues of opportunity for people to move to and start to better their lives. Matter of fact, it was even stated, when there's a depressed real estate area, that is actually a window of opportunity to start, someone to start at, to get a low-cost house and establish themselves. So we will continue to bring this information forward. Meantime, I will again ask that you revoke the approval of the viaduct demolition. That is nothing like what you approved. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? One last call, any citizens to be heard? Rose?
Ordinances for final passage. Council File 15991, ordinance number 152017, an ordinance amending the zoning code of the city of Erie Articles 2, 3, and 6 by adding a provision to allow an urban garden[1777.58]
Ordinances for final passage. Council file 15991, ordinance number 152017, an ordinance amending the zoning code of the city of Erie, Articles 2, 3, and 6, by adding a provision to allow an urban garden as a permitted use and market garden as a special exception in R2, R3, and RLB districts defining such uses and requirements. By Mr. Brennan, seconded by Mrs. Arrington, the council file ordinance bill number 15991, now known as official file ordinance number 152017, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski. City council pass official file ordinance number 1527, finally by yeas seven, nays zero. Council file 15992, official ordinance number 162017, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $126,757 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof. 2017 ensures fraud prevention authority. By Mr. Winarski, seconded by Mrs. Arrington, the council file ordinance bill number 15992, now known as official file ordinance number 162017, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski. City council pass official file ordinance number 162017, finally by yeas seven, nays Council file number 15993, ordinance number 172017, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $2 million from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Office of the Budget as funding from the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program, RACP, and will be utilized to assess in the planning and construction of a dental school in the city of Erie. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mrs. Arrington, that council file bill or bill number 15993, now known as official file ordinance number 172017, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Obviously, I signed on to this. I signed on and I don't mind and I'm voting yes for this, but I want to take the opportunity again to just talk about the importance of the role the city plays in the growth of nonprofits in this community. And it makes very, 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 very good sense to me that those same nonprofits would really and much more strongly consider participating in a pilot program in a consistent, in a significant way. I get the property, you know, even, we had some folks in the office today from another institution of higher learning. And we're doing a lot as whether it be a pass through, whether it be allowing or support, whatever, you know, there's a million things we do as a city government to support these nonprofits. And I don't think it's an inappropriate ask, and I don't know that it's asked enough respectfully. I don't know, but it may not be or it may be. But I don't think we should let the issue die in this administration or the next to have consistent pilot participation from these institutions that are benefiting from the property that is tax exempt in our city, whether it be Ganon or Lecom or Mercyhurst or whatever. I think it's important that we should really, really keep pushing and really keep the foot to the fire of these organizations who have to come to us to do the growth and the enhancement that they want to do in their organizations and in their institutions. So I am voting for it, but I just wanted to do it with that caveat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Continuing roll call, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski. City council pass official file ordinance number 172017, finally by yeas seven, nays Ordinances for first reading. Council file number 15994, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $252,491 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG 17 projects. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the council file ordinance number 15994, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. City council read and adopt, council file ordinance number 15994, by yeas seven, nays zero, on first reading. Council file 15995, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $641,825 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the home M17 projects. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the council file number 15995, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski. City council read and adopt, council file ordinance number 15995, by yeas seven, nays zero, on first reading. Council file 15996, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $2,791,421 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and $14,412 program income for a total of $2,805,833 for the following year, for the year 2017 projects. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the council file ordinance number 15996, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski.
Rose, hold on a second. Isn't that the CDVG money that we, yeah, I want to tell the public out there that we, the money finally came through for the programs, and I think we were only slighted approximately $16,000. Is that correct?
Close to that, yes.
Yeah, so I mean, that's not bad, what we hoped to receive. So that's good news to all the organizations. And on behalf of council, we want to thank you for the openness of the proceedings, and I think everything went well this year. Thank you. Go ahead, Rose.
Roll call? Oh, already done with roll call? Okay.
Yep.
City council read and adopt, council file ordinance number 15996, by yeas seven, nays zero, on first reading. Council file 15997, an ordinance amending ordinance number 261958, the traffic code of the city of Erie by the installation of a stop sign at one intersection, Chapin Street and Ritchie Street. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Brennan, that council file ordinance number 15997, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. City council read and adopt, council file ordinance number 15997, by yeas seven, nays We'll move on to new business. Mr. President?
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
We have a motion to move in second. Do we have a second? I'm sorry.
Second that, Mr. President.
Second, do we have any separations?
Mr. President, two, two and seven.
Number two and number seven? Don't you said, Dave?
Yes.
Under new business?
Under new business.
Number two and seven under new business.
Okay. Any other separations? Voting on the balance, Rose?
Okay. Moving the balance of the agenda, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski. By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Murzky, resolved by the council of the city of Erie that the proper city officials hereby resolve and approve the issuance of certain revenue bonds by the city of Erie Higher Education Building Authority and the undertaking and completion by the authority of all other matters necessary or convenient for the financing of said issue by the authority is approved and is hereby declared that said finance is desirable for the safety and welfare of the people in the area served by Mercyhurst University. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Murzky.
I sponsored this, co-sponsored it because I believe that the dormitory that's going to be built at Mercyhurst University is going to achieve two objectives. First off, it's going to help Mercyhurst University move kids out of the residential neighborhood and back onto campus. And the other thing is, by approving the issuance of these revenue bonds, I would just want the citizens of the city of Erie to know that no taxpayer money's being used in this. It's just a blessing that the city of Erie gives to the Higher Education Building Authority to issue these bonds so that they're tax, not taxable, bonds for finance purposes. So it'll allow Mercyhurst to bring more kids back onto campus, creating opportunities to revitalize that Upper East Side neighborhood which I used to live in, and I can tell you the neighbors are very happy with this construction.
Yes, Mr. Brennan. President? I just wanted to note that I need to abstain from this vote since our firm is working on the architectural design work for this. So I just want to let people know that I'm abstaining because of that reason, to avoid an appearance of a conflict of interest. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Jones, do you have a comment or?
No, sir. No, Mr. President.
Okay. I just, I want to parrot what Mr. Jones said earlier.
Well, yeah, I'll let you do it.
Why don't you go ahead?
I'll just echo my same comment in relation to nonprofits of significant size in our community, i.e. universities, hospitals, et cetera, participating regularly in a pilot payment in lieu of taxes partnership. We appreciate the 30 we get here, the 10 we get there. Those are all appreciated, but they're hard to budget with, especially when they're attached to specific areas. So again, just echoing and supporting this, but echoing the whole point again around active and strategic and significant pilot interaction with the city from these organizations and institutions.
And I'd like to, you know, support Mr. Jones's contention that these are troubling times and every time we talk about an alternate source of taxation or looking at enhanced pilots, we sometimes get beat over the head and not understood properly, but our taxpayers are being stressed to the limit. And each time that we give away something, I think it's only fair if we ask for a lower return, especially when you look at the size of the universities and the nonprofits that are starting to grow at a rate that it does take police and fire protection and other services to keep everybody going. And I think what we're asking is that in the future, you think about maybe a consistent contribution. Doesn't have to be a lot right away, but anything would help us at this point. And I agree with Mr. Murzky that for those of us who live on the East Side, we support this project because for too long now, the young people who haven't learned to live in a residential area properly, being moved on campus is a big plus for our area. I think it'll help restore, hopefully, the neighborhood where we can get some residence factor on a permanent basis. But please thank the president of college for his foresight on this one. Go ahead, Rose. Any other, excuse me, any other comments? Go ahead, Rose.
All right, roll call. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan abstains, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski. This resolution will adopt by yeas six, nays zero. By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Winarski, resolved by the council of the city of Erie that the communication received from Mayor Joseph Sennett that the following individuals be hereby appointed to the Erie Metropolitan Transit Authority. Chris Loder, Matthew Good, Michael Martin, Gary Greck, and Fred Rush. Discussion?
Okay, any comments from any board?
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Mr. Brennan.
Yes, I have a few comments. I just wanted to say a few things. For the appointment process, I know there's certain bylaws that require, you know, when the appointments get reappointed, but I would love to see that in the future, maybe this gets visited so there's a lap, so we don't have a lapse in these appointments. Because definitely causes some confusion and especially when people are seeing that we're reappointing somebody and their term expired. So I know there's some confusion and some discussion that we had in the back room because of that. But my opinion also, given that we have a new mayor coming in six months, that's going to be working directly with the MTA board on transportation issues for at least next four years, I would think that he deserved the opportunity to appoint these members. So for these reasons, I'm going to be voting no to this resolution.
Any other member? Yes, Mrs. Arrington.
I'm in agreeance with Dave. I'm going to be voting no against it too as well because I think the new mayor coming in too also should be able to make some decisions. And also, we need new faces and new ideals on the board, so give other people a chance to help out the Erie community. So I'm going to be voting no as well.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Murzky.
If you look at the term expirations on here, it says Chris Loder, term expiration 12/31/20. That means it's, the five-year term would have been started in 2015. If it were, these aren't all starting, I think the confusion of the citizens is that all of these terms are starting effective in 2017, which would then take them through 20, what, 22? And that's not the case with the expiration dates of these terms. And so I think that there was some miscommunication and I think also realizing that the charter was just renewed and so we have to get these appointments put on. And the way that our system works is that the mayor appoints and then council votes up or down. So because these are staggered terms and because it is, you know, the mayor's prerogative, we can't wait six months and have no board. So I think that it's important that we vote on this, and I will be voting yes.
Any other members of council? Mr. Winarski.
Thank you, Mr. President. As liaison to the EMTA, I have personally worked with some of these guys that are getting reappointed. Chris Loder, who is going to be serving out the extended term of Mr. Pol, that guy, Mr. Loder, I have not had the opportunity to know personally, but I have met him. These have been good people that have done a very good job prior to this reinstatement. I, a lot of variables go with the little delay here with this, one being the dispute with the charter and the county on this. We worked very hard on this council to keep the EMTA, to keep a voice from this city, from this council, to have some voice in this and not let the takeover be completely on the county's edge. We worked with them, eventually came to an agreement. At this point, we have some good citizens, both, some of these guys live in the city, some of them do not, but they have done a good job in the past. They've worked well with everybody on the board, with each administration. each administration. They were not part of per se the negotiations, but they were there to be a, shall we say, helping hand a mediator. They did not pick sides. So it was something that I believe, you know, at this point, the new mayor comes in, whoever it may be, I am more than confident they will work quite well with any of these individuals that the mayor now is, wants to reappoint. Thank you.
Any other member of council?
Mr. President, I just want to echo Mr. Murzky's comments. They were, you know, we shared those comments in the back, that except for one, these appointments are all from previous and deep back into at least a year of this current administration's purview to appoint. And so if they were all till 2022, or excuse me, yeah, 2022, I would have more of an issue with this. It's interesting, though, that some people are so interested in what the next mayor is going to do and what this mayor is doing. This is very interesting to me. And I don't take this stuff lightly, and I kind of make light of it, just to, you know, sometimes you can, you laugh through things because you just don't understand why people have it all of a sudden in interest. But the, but, but on a professional and a more business perspective of the issue, the majority of these individuals are not being appointed as of 18. They're being appointed as of when they should have been reappointed already. And so that will take them, again, if the mayor, if the current mayor, Mayor Sennett, would have appointed these individuals in 2015 or reappointed in 15, reappointed in 16, it doesn't change anything. I think we're just a little bit, it's not usual or normal to have this many reappointments at the same time. The EMT is, EMTA is still a hot button issue with the charter just coming back. This is a hot issue. And again, maybe a year ago, no one cares. In a year from now, no one cares. But with the new administration, things like that happen in an election year. So I think all of those things make the recipe of this conversation. Because again, I've been on council for almost 12 years. I've never seen this much dialogue about the mayor's appointments. You know, I mean, this is including the, the time during the Tom Ridge runway extension stuff. And that was a big monster to deal with. So again, I'm comfortable with voting for this because the majority of the individuals being reappointed are not being reappointed as of 18 or even 17. They're being reappointed as of at least one year back into this current mayor's administration. And again, it's appropriate to do it that way. So I will be voting for this for those reasons.
Any other mayor comment?
Mr. President. Initially, I was voting no, and I'm still, I still got about a minute to decide. I think it's a lot to do with timing, a lot to do with timing. Yes, the appointment should have been made previously, but it wasn't. As Councilman Jones and Councilman Murzky indicated, if it was made at that time, it wouldn't be an issue today. But they are not being appointed today with an additional five years. I understand that. I don't like it, but I understand it. The question is, if it dies, they will continue to serve. Or if it dies, and these board members decide, well, I'm not going to serve, so they go right away. Now we have the authority without a majority technically to make any decisions whatsoever. And then we will say to the mayor, well, you got to find some new appointments. Mayor said, you turned down my appointments. I'll get to it. You know, we're in a rock and a hard place. I don't like how it came down, but it came down. But we have to look at all sides. Will they continue to serve if we say no? I don't know. I don't know. I'll decide when it gets to me.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Murzky.
I'd just like to make a few comments. First off, the next mayor will be appointing all of these positions. I mean, if you look at the, when the terms expire, the next mayor is going to reappoint all these at the end of his, his or her, well, there's only his first term. So that argument, I think, doesn't carry any water, because it doesn't carry any weight, because the next mayor is going to be at that same spot at the end of his first term, making the appointment. So then what are we going to say? No, wait for the next mayor? I think the other thing, too, when we're looking at the character of the people that the mayor put forward, I know all of them very well with the exception of Chris Loder, but I know Chris, but not well. But Matthew Good, Michael Martin, Gary Greck, Fred Rush, these are men of distinction in this community that served very well, have given of their time to serve EMTA in the past and to serve this city. And to vote them down, I think, is playing politics. This is exactly what the Congress did with President Obama's Supreme Court nominee. Oh, there's a new president coming in in six months, so let's not vote on it. That's our job to vote. If you want to vote no, vote no. But based on the integrity and the character of these candidates for these appointments, I can't with a clean conscience vote no, so I have to vote yes.
Mr. Carley, do you have anything to add on the legal front?
It's a proper resolution. It's to be voted on. There's no irregularities that I can identify.
Rose?
All right, roll call. Mrs. Arrington? Mr. Brennan?
No.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Murzky? Mr. Winarsky? Mr. Witherspoon? Mr. Kowalski? This resolution will adopt by yeas five, nays two. We have a waive rules, Mr. President.
Okay, Rose.
It'll be on the resolution to the Court House Bill 271. Voting on waiving the rules, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski. By Mr. Murzky and seconded by Mr. Kowalski, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the city council respectfully request Pennsylvania senators, including local senators, Dan Loughlin and Michelle Brooks, and senate leaders Jake Corman and Jay Costa, support House Bill 271 to keep the City of Erie allocation of $500,000 for capital infrastructure projects or emergency services. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Murzky.
We put a resolution in earlier in the year asking for $500,000 from gaming money. And I want to thank you, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. President, for attending the Senate hearing on that bill. And in that, we requested, you know, that half a million dollars for public safety. The rationale being that all of the lead assets that are in the City of Erie and the city has to support the public safety for that, police and fire. If something happens at any of those lead assets, we are the responders. And so with that, you know, the only thing that we're voting on here, this isn't an issue with the county and ECR. This is just respectfully requesting that the Senate do what the House did. And the House kept $500,000 and passed for the City of Erie to receive gaming funds for public safety. And we're asking Senator Loughlin and the Pennsylvania Senate to do the same thing. And so that's all this resolution is, is respectfully requesting them to maintain that in the legislation that they pass, that they hopefully pass.
Any other members?
Yeah, I agree with this resolution. And again, as Mr. Murzky said, we're talking about the $500,000 for the infrastructure projects and emergency services. But I do want to, again, I guess I'm repeating what Mr. Murzky says, that this has nothing to do with ECR. Because I want to go on record that I do believe that ECR has done an excellent job. They've been creative. There's been a lot of things that they've done in the city, about $22 million in improvements to strengthen both nonprofits, for-profit businesses. They brought a lot of really, you know, as I said, creative programs and initiatives to distributing the money as far as work first development, you know, innovating with municipal collaboration and with the community and cultural assets. So I will be voting yes for this, and I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any other member? I'd like to thank Mr. Murzky also for his hard work. I met with Representative Harkins recently and had a phone call into Senator Loughlin. I don't know how it's going to work out, and I'm hoping, and I hope this letter helps convince him. But we were like Councilman Jones talking earlier about how we, you know, we're constantly looking at pilots. And this had to be a huge oversight in the Commonwealth that the largest city next to a casino did not receive any money by a mere error of geography because we didn't touch the other township. You look around Commonwealth in Bethlehem and Ellentown, which we always use, there's approximately $13 million available in that pot because I think they're a better producing casino. So they probably took the, rather than the straight 10, they probably took the 3%. They cut a deal with Ellentown and each other. Then whoever was the loser in the war when they had two competing businesses fighting for one license, we looked at the loser and Ellentown gets $4 million for doing nothing, just cooperating. We get a big donut hole from the casino. And believe me when I tell you this, they did not build that casino because of the Mill Creek Mall or Summit. They built it because there's a city of 100,000 sitting right near it. That convinced them. Yet that city does not get a dime out of the proceedings. So all we're asking for is a little cut. And this is not money that's going to go into the general budget. It's specifically earmarked for public safety. And my suggestion will be that it'll be a strictly monitored fund, working in conjunction with the controller. And it'll be a fund that we can use for badly needed items, fire trucks, police cars, which have been vastly neglected. So I want to thank the legislators on a Commonwealth level who worked hard to include this. And I would, I would ask all of you, if all you listening out there, give Senator Loughlin a call and tell him your feelings if you believe in what we're asking for, which is keep the $500,000 in the bill. We don't want to get involved in any of the other infighting, but we feel like that would be a huge impetus for the City of Erie, and that would help us in our continuing battle to keep our public safety on an even keel. So thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Rose?
Roll call. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Well, we'll start with Mr. Winarsky today. I caught him off guard, right?
Not really. Actually, no report. We have a port of order meeting tomorrow, and we have our EMTA monthly meeting this coming Monday. I'll update you at our next meeting regarding those entities that I'm liaison to. Getting a vast number of phone calls lately, whether it be from the lawns, from the streets, from the neighborhoods, citizens with issues, whether it be with kids in the neighborhood. But every avenue I've taken and called City Hall with, I have gotten good responses, good answers. Talked to the police chief. He's following up on some issues we have down on Hess Ave. So with that being said, I just want to thank for the cooperation I'm getting down here at City Hall. But other than that, carry on to the next council person.
Thank you, Mr. Winarsky. Mr. Jones?
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
You're not allowed for words, are you?
Listen, I have so many words that I have to figure out which ones to utilize, Mr. President. No significant report in relation to committees. I did want to, again, thank our Economic Development Department working so diligently and even their patience with, you know, some things that were out of their control in relation to our CDBG budget and funding coming in and working and communicating with nonprofits in the community and other groups to kind of reassure them and ensure them that, you know, as soon as we get it, we're going to get it through the process as expeditiously as possible. And so I just think it was, I think it's important to recognize that effort and that work and thank them and that entire department for that. And a much better process this year than what we've experienced sometimes in the past. Several citizens had, that had, that came up and spoke on several different topics. I want to touch on, Mr. Cooley was talking about it. I'm definitely supporting the effort that he is making towards sending and taking some young men down to, and possibly young women as well, some young people down to Pittsburgh and building a relationship with our neighbors right down the road in 79. It's not that far away for something that positive. And it's a beautiful opportunity to allow young people to get exposure to something different. Exposure is usually one of the missing pieces. I work with youth in the community and some young people I work with on, that live on the East Side, have never been to the peninsula. Like, they go that side of town, they know Waldemere, and that's literally it, if they can afford it, as expensive as Waldemere is these days. And, you know, so I think it's important, and I'm definitely all in, and I'm sure many of us on this council in our own ways will be supportive of making that happen in a consistent way, I would hope. The McBride Vida issue, it's not really, I don't think this council's, but we're trying, we're not trying to get into an argument, nor are we trying to mediate an argument between citizens in the community who have significant expertise in certain areas that absolutely disagree with what our city staff are telling us. I don't, I'm not an engineer or an architect. So I have to take the people, unless there's some conversation where we have our staff and these individuals from the community sitting and showing us who's right, wrong, and having that interaction, I'm willing to sit through that a little bit. But if the department in this city is telling us X, Y and Z is going to happen, and I ask them directly, are you still saying that X, Y and Z is going to happen? And someone else is saying that it's not, I have to take their word for it at face value until I know for sure that it's different. And so that's why, again, I'm, you know, I ask the questions, I get the information, I think we all, I know we all do on this council. We have different opinions maybe on how to move forward with that information. But I, it's not an argument that we want to be a part of between certain, you know, citizen groups and other departments in the city. We want the best thing to happen. On a little bit of a sarcastic note, maybe, sometimes with this argument of the McBride Vida is very challenging because we have a group, or we have people that are saying, save the bridge. And some of them are saying, you know, we need to be able to drive over it again. And then others are saying, no, that's not what we're talking about. And so there's a little bit of confusion or gray area in that conversation, which muddies the waters. It was interesting as we're talking about, and I know it's accurate, I've walked it. I have younger siblings who've walked it, and I pulled over and said, get out, you know, get in my car. It's too dangerous, it's too crazy under this, on the, on the Bayfront Connector or the Bayfront Highway. So I get it. But I was also a child in the 90s, young person in the 90s, walking over the McBride Vida when cars were going over it. And that's, that was much more dangerous than the Bayfront. I'm telling you, it was closer. You talk about snow or water and rain and the car being about a foot away from you. You know, so I think there's, there's a broader conversation to have around safety. And if we are able to maintain and create and maintain a safe passage through and not have the expense of having to maintain this bridge, or I guess that's, that's the choice that we're going to have to make. With that said, I like the bridge. I, it took me about two years to get used to not being able to drive over it. I had to do many U-turns down under the bridge to get back. You know, my name's on the petition to save the bridge from five years ago. I supported that. name's on the petition to save the bridge from five years ago. I supported that, but we've kind of moved from that option right now, I think, for the most part. So I just want to touch on that. Finally, in relation to the landlord ordinance, has been a significant issue in the last several months, and I have, I'm frustrated because a citizen came to me about some concerns in, in their rental property, and I called multiple people to get response and answer, and I got a response, or I got an answer, but I didn't really get a response, if that makes sense. So I was told the right thing, but there was no follow-up. I never got the follow-up phone calls. This has been weeks, and I'm a councilman, and I never say stuff like that in this setting or really, or in public, outside in, you know, outside of a meeting. But if a councilman can't get legitimate answers or get some follow-up or a phone call from a code enforcement officer to say that I did do what you asked because it was a specific safety concern, then I understand the frustration of the citizen, the average citizen. I'm a citizen as well. But the non-elected citizen, I get that frustration. So I just wanted to kind of express that. We've got a meeting coming up very soon, and some of the concerns that we had previously, I've experienced very firsthand. Why is it that a property fails inspection, and because the landlord does not pay for the reinspection, it goes not inspected again, and this failed property sits there, and people, and a woman almost falls off of a railing that's not totally connected appropriately, a senior citizen struggling to walk, does, is new to the property, grabs the rail, and almost falls. And I call and ask about it, and nothing, and I don't get a phone call back? Like, guys, I have a problem with that. And so these are going to be the same people that are going to tell us this program is working, and I think in general it is. But because this property failed, and the landlord failed to pay for the reinspection because he didn't fix what was broken, so it's okay to just not pay for the reinspection? So we can't re-inspect you to tell you that, wait a minute, you didn't fix this? So now there are citizens, and here's the thing, the tenant, I know I'm almost done, my time, I think, but the tenant didn't even know they failed. So they're living in an unsafe property we deem, or the subcontracted inspector deemed not appropriate, and they don't even know it. And this is electric issues as well as other safety concerns. I have a problem with that, and I just wanted to kind of really voice that, and this is still not a done deal, you know what I mean, in relation to how we move forward with this particular ordinance. And I would hope to get a phone call, that the inspector or the code enforcement officer did go out and is going to touch base with this landlord and enforce what we said needs to be enforced, because it's not just a smoke detector, which is very important. Don't get me wrong. It's not just some sighting thing. This is safety concerns and rails, and a woman almost fell because of that, and we still haven't gotten a phone call. So that's my report for today. Just wanted to make sure that that was, that was articulated, and hopefully we get some, some action around it.
Glad you're calmed down today.
What's that?
Glad you're calmed down.
Yeah, I'm calm. It's as calm as I get.
Mrs. Arrington?
Thank you, Mr. President. When it comes to public safety, we got a number of issues going on, from violence to drug overdosing to stabbing, and, and the viaduct. And I went on that walk with everybody last Monday, too. In, in 12th Street, 12th and Bayfront, where they were talking about, I had one of my kids with me from my program. We really had to cross over to the other side of the street, walk down, and then cross back over to walk over the viaduct. And that's scary. That really is. And as city council, if we voting yes for the engineers, if they're telling us they're going to do A, B, and C, if we voting yes for them to do it, then we need to make sure that their Ts are crossed and their Is are dotted, because at the end of the day, if, if they're not doing what they're supposed to, that's going to be a bad look on us as council. So we really need to find out what's going on, and I'm, with Mr. Jones said, I'm all for having a meeting with our engineers and, and our citizens who's doing the research and telling us, well, they didn't do this, and they said they did that. I think that's when we know what, what is supposed to be getting done, if it's really done or not. So we need to get all of us in a room, and I'll be the first one to say, hey, I'm ready for a study session with that, because at the end of the day, it's about our youth. We already have enough young kids losing their lives over senseless violence, drug overdosing, stabbings. The last thing we need is to really start a train wreck of car accidents. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. My esteemed colleague, Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad Councilman Jones have his title back from rhetoric. That young man had it, but I think he just got it back.
Got six months left. I got to get out.
Oh, you're doing it. Of course, I'm not going to reiterate everything that Councilman Jones and Councilwoman just spoke on, because it's the truth. We have to study the viaduct. I was in favor of the viaduct, but I voted based on the information that we were given. And Councilman Jones has requested additional information. We're going to need the information from the citizens, because we hear at every meeting that we, we don't have to do it, we do have to do it. We have to go with what's presented to us by the folks we work with in engineering. It's not to say that anyone's right or wrong. It could be misinterpretation. So we, we just need to get to the bottom of it, and it's going to be a, I think it'll be a longer study session than normal. There'll be a lot of questions asked. But in the end run, somebody got to tell me where the money's going to come from, to rehab the viaduct or tear it down and build a new viaduct. No one's speaking on that issue, and that's going to be a key issue. Because I think if it falls on the city, I don't think the majority of the citizens will vote for it, because we're talking about an increase somewhere. So we'll research it, we'll study it, and we'll vote accordingly. On another note, I'd like to say that tonight is the second night of the Summer Basketball League. We had 306 males and females sign up. They're playing right now. I thought somebody had texted me the results, but they haven't. We, the bleachers are packed, parents are there. We still have probably 28 young men from the age of nine to 16, that we just don't have any more room on any teams to put them there. July 5th, we're going to start the Bayview Park League for the young men and women on Second and Cherry, down to Bayview Park. We did it one year. It was a success. We're going to go back and do it again. I want to thank the city administration for their support and many businesses in the city. We will be having a sponsors' night probably midway. Hopefully, all the sponsors and supporters will be there. It's a headache, trust me. It's a headache, but it's something that we know, we have the kids from 5:15 to around 9:00, 9:30, and they're all there, and they're not getting any trouble. First two days, we have not had any incident. We don't anticipate it. Most of them are very good kids, and I'm going to try to pack the council meeting somewhere in the middle, so you can see for yourself the young men and women that we're dealing with. And I'm just happy to be part of it for 27 years. We just had, well, I have to admit, we had one incident, and the person's last name was Jones. Now, that particular family has been with the organization for 27 years. They lived two lots from the court. And Councilman Jones constantly tells us about how many siblings. Well, they aren't playing, but the siblings of the siblings are now playing. And one of his nephews, who's in that nine, 10 age group, is so good, he's playing in 11 and 12. But his brother tried to move him up to the 13, 14. But we kept him down, so he'll be able to enjoy. But it's, if you, Mondays and Fridays, if you have the time, stop by. Just take a look. See the young people enjoy themselves. See the young people arguing with me. They don't disrespect me. They just don't agree with everything I do. But you have to follow the rules, and they'll get attuned to it. I usually don't bend, but sometimes I do. But I want to thank everyone who participate and volunteer to support the organization, and we look forward to doing the west side. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Regarding McBride viaduct, I did get an email from John Tuschek the other day. There's supposed to be a public meeting in July and August. I was looking at the website also, so, so hopefully that'll be come up soon, and we may, that could be another venue to have, ask those questions. And also, this, I'd heard several times about the budget going up, but he had noted the budget's at 2.4 million. So I know that it was noted at 4.5, or someone had noted that also. So, again, that's what I heard from, from the city engineer. Couple of things I wanted to, to thank council for voting yes to the urban farming amendments. I know there was a lot of work done by many people in the administration, in the zoning department, a lot of collaboration with, with Kerry, who is here today, who had given a lot of inspiration for a lot of the amendments. A lot of research done by Matthew Pooz and Jake, and planning commission meetings, and but it was, it was a kind of a well-fought-out initiative, and we got it done. One report also, I attended the World Refugee Day event yesterday at the Habibi Restaurant. They had live music, they had a buffet, it was really, a really nice event. Met a lot of people who, who were at the event who were really excited to be in Erie and to now call, call the city of Erie their home. So it was a really, really nice, nice event to attend. As for meetings, I did attend the Park Authority meeting last week. No really report there. A lot of the ongoing initiatives that I reported before. And then next week, I have a meeting with the Erie Downtown Partnership, their board meetings on Monday, so I'll report on that meeting at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Councilman Murzky.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank my colleagues for voting to waive the rules and for the $500,000 advocacy resolution. And I want to thank Representative Harkins, Representative Fabrizio, and all of the Erie County delegation from the Pennsylvania House of Representatives for supporting that. And we again call on Senator Loughlin and Senator Brooks to support that as well. $500,000 is less than 5% of what the casino revenues are to municipalities, but it means a great deal to the city. One of the things that we voted on that in the, moving the balance of the agenda was the school zone light at the new Erie High School. They're going to put in a school zone crosswalk there and the flashing lights. And I would just ask the administration if they could work with the police department to make sure, when I taught there last year when it was Central and Roosevelt, a lot of times the parents double park on Cherry Street and you can't even move. So 15 miles an hour will be no problem when you're going zero. So if we could, you know, get the traffic, if, you know, nowadays, kids don't have, they have a problem walking to the corner to get picked up, you know, they need curbside service. So if we could just keep that in mind, you know, with that many students going to that school next year, we're not going to be able to have that logistically the way that it was in the past. I also want to thank the recipients of the Erie Reader 40 Under 40 Award, 40 young people in this community doing great things. Congratulations to them. And I want to congratulate the Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network, who opened up their east side location today, new location. They've been on the east side, but they're now on East 26th Street next to Hoffman's and the old Jerry Lou Fruit Building, and so we wish them continued success on the east side. They've done wonderful things on the Little Italy area, and we're looking forward to continuing the great things on the east side. And finally, since we won't be here before the 4th of July, I want to wish everybody a happy holiday for the 4th of July. Enjoy your day. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Murzky. I like to thank Mr. Witherspoon myself for being nominated to the 50 Over 50 Club.
You could take that another decade if you want.
What happens when you guys age out? It's 45 over 45, or what? Oh, well. As president, I had the pleasure of attending the Higher Education Building Authority meeting, and I want to assure Mr. Jones I did bring that concept to their ears, that we would love to have a pilot arrangement. Also had the pleasure today of attending the open house of the Sisters of St. Joseph on East 26th Street. They do a lot of nice work, and I'm hoping they do for the east side what they did for the west side. And after talking to them, I have no doubt they're going to be very persuasive, and they have a nice crew of volunteers already, so whatever help we can give them from the city side, I hope we give them. And getting on to, you know, Mr. Jones reminded me of something. I had a call this week about tires up in the area around the zoo, and they were picked up properly. I got a phone call from three citizens, all within about a half an hour, and they were frustrated that it took over a week to get those tires moved. The first comment from one of our employees was, we don't pick up tires. And that's true. That's true. We don't pick up tires, except when they're on city property. I reminded one of our high-ranked administrators, who gave me the runaround about, you know, you can't believe everything people tell you. Well, I judge the quality of people that called me, okay, and I don't want to hear that. I don't want to hear that, you know, the correct answer would be, we don't normally pick them up. However, where are they, and there are, you know, that would have been the correct response, not straight out, and I'm saying they probably, maybe they don't know the law, or they're looking at it too liberally. But I get the same things Mr. Jones does. I get complaints about high grass, and I had one the other day about a building that's been renting for a year. One year, and I hope the audit shows this, because I'm going to be very disappointed that in one year, and I asked, what, what happened? Why wasn't something done about this? Why isn't it registered? The comment is, well, the landlord is a tough guy to deal with. Well, yeah, I'm going to be tough. I'm going to tell you what I'm going to do. I'm not going to pay my taxes next year, okay, and I want to see what you do to me. I have a feeling I'm not going to get away with it. But this is the type of stuff that councils have been hearing about, and I don't want to hear from our employees. Look, I, I agree with Mr. Jones. We shouldn't be allowed any more privileges than the average citizen. But like Mr. Jones said, he's a member of council, I'm the president. And if I can't get an answer, and Mr. Jones can't get a proper answer, because I ask for follow-up reports, I never get them. Something's wrong with the system, because that's what the, that's what the customers, and I call them that, the taxpayers are getting the same runaround. So if these people need an attitude adjustment, okay, I'm going to use this forum and every other forum I got to embarrass them. And I hate doing that, because we got a lot of good employees out there. But some people, you know, you can't just let things ride. We're at the point now where, I had a call on my show the other day about grass at 31st and Raspberry. It's not grass. It's about 10 feet high. I mean, come on. I mean, let's find the owner, and let's go after him. Something's wrong. Because, you know what, if they don't want to do the job, I'll tell you what, I'll come out of retirement. You can appoint me to do it, and I'll cut the gra, I mean, I'll see who cuts the grass and wounds it. And if it's a will of council, I will set up a study session to deal with the McBride viaduct. If you'd like me to, you know, drop me a line, we'll set up, I'll have Rose set it up, we'll have Mr. Pettit and our city engineers. And this is an important issue. We need to find out, I was told that there were safety features going in on 12th Street. Now, if that's been changed, I want to know about it, too. Okay?
Well, I'm dropping you a line now, Mr. President.
Okay. In fact, I'll kind of put you, you and Mr. Jones, if you want, in charge of that, and coordinate that with, you know, because I think that is an important issue. And on a, my, on a, a nice, light note, I think we ought to form a little- And on a, my, on a nice, light note, I think we ought to form a little basketball team, maybe a little three-on-three. Mel, you can have that side of the podium? And I'll take Curtis, I'll play, I'll play Kevin Love, and he'll be Kyrie Irving, because he's got all these basketball skills.
I'll be the cheerleader.
There you go. So there you go, we got, we have a little match for charity, okay? I want to block your shot again, but...
Come on, bring it on.
Bring it on.
Bring it on.
You're the shot blocker, right?
Yeah. But, okay, that's enough.
I don't have any report.
After that.
Police events over here. For the other basketball team, anyway. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Jones, I know that you had a problem with code enforcement officer. Do you know the address of the property that you were calling? Can you give me that, so we can follow up and see where the disconnect was, and we will certainly look into that? I know Mr. Zimmerman works to have a good department, and we'll see what happened there. I also found the email that Mr. Tuschak sent us on June 5th, talking about the McBride viaduct. I believe everyone was copied on this, and it went on to state that the cost estimated for demolition has not changed significantly from the original estimate. Restoration of the bridge will exceed $3 million. The original estimate is, the estimate to demo is currently 1.3 million. Total funding available for the project at this time was 2.4. The project will include bridge demolition, East 12th Street sidewalk improvements, Bayfront Connector, East 12th Street intersection pedestrian improvements, patching paving, East Avenue, and construction inspection. Again, I'm not an engineer, but I need to trust that the experts that we have working for the city and those folks with PennDOT are leading us down the right path. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No report?
No report from our solicitor? Okay, with that, motion adjourned?
The move, second, third, and seventh.
City Council adjourns at 9:27. Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones.
Bring it on.